What we have...
I might want to let him know what we did.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. What we did was, we have petitioned the, uh, the county commission has petitioned the public service commission about the general investigation into the operation of financial affairs in Lincoln Public Service District. And we actually petitioned the, uh, also petitioned the, uh, West Hamlin Public Service District to help provide, see if they will provide billing and technical support to the Lincoln Public Service District. Now, I know that a couple of meetings ago, we talked to you and asked you to open up the investigation, look into the affairs of Lincoln PSD, and we was hoping that maybe that you can give us, uh, some, some information on as to where you are right now.
Okay, well, I, I think, uh, anyone who's read the newspaper or, um, watched the news, and I'm not just talking about locally, but in the area, is probably aware of matters which are public record, which, uh, involve the chairman of the board of the Lincoln PSD. And, um, those certainly are of great interest, um, I'm sure to everyone in Lincoln County, obviously, all taxpayers and all customers of the Lincoln PSD. And, um, there certainly have been a, a series of complaints and issues that have been brought to the county. And, um, as requested by the commission, I'm looking at those and considering all possible action that may be taken. But frankly, uh, there's so much information and so many, uh, issues that I'm not at a point where I can give the commission, uh, a recommendation or proceed with implementing any particular course of action. And I know that may, uh, not be satisfactory, but it is what it is. And, and it's both because of the breadth and volume of, of information that I'm trying to get my hands around and assemble and, and coalesce into some, um, organized, uh, coherent form regarding what direction we may go. It's also a function of my work and workload. I was here till 10 o'clock last night. Uh, I'm here regularly till seven or eight. Um, I've left church on Sunday at noon and, and come to the courthouse and stayed until leaving for evening church at seven o'clock. And, um, and it may sound like a complaint, um, but it's just a statement of, of my life as it exists at the moment. And everybody's case is the most important case because it's their case. And, um, after murderers, rapists, burglars, petty thieves, um, wife beaters, uh, child abusers, uh, abuse and neglect cases, and, um, juvenile drug port, which I just left to come down here, I'm trying to deal with a number of civil issues that the county has. We have some boundary, um, issues that need to be resolved that have been sitting on my desk for the better part of a year because these are things that, uh, if I sink my teeth into them and go to work on them, I could spend a couple days working on that one issue. But I've got hundreds and actually thousands of other cases that I'm trying to deal with. Um, I can only pledge to try to do my best to complete this because I understand, uh, as the news reports have flowed and the complaints have come in and the, uh, civil and criminal actions that have been filed have been filed, that it's, appears to me to be reaching crisis stage, um, with the public service district. And, um, I'm doing my best to try and bring this to a conclusion in terms of recommending a course of action for the commission and, um, we'll...
Mr. Gabe Hart, I was interrupting you, but, um, we have received some information today from the Army Court of Engineers, well, from D.L. Robinson. And, uh, there was, and this may be something that would probably help you, maybe it will help expedite the process, the process that we're trying, you know, that you're undertaking or, you know, looking into this issue. But there was money that was, you know, the county commission, there was a drawdown request on May the 29th, 2014, that was presented to the county commission and prompt payment was made. Um, on July the 7th, the Army Court of Engineers wired $262,142, $87, $87 directly to the public service district account to issue a check to D.L. Robinson. And there still hasn't been any payment that has been made. So, we, and that's one of the things that we were, you know, discussing, we didn't necessarily discuss this, but we were discussing some of the issues and the issue that I feel like that we have is solvency. And with accountability and transparency, there's a lot of things that's been brought up, and I know that you were, you know, you were tied up in, in court. But we as, for me, as being a member of the Lincoln Public Service District, and you are too, um, I would hope that, that you would, you know, put this on the, on the front burner and, and let's get some resolution to this problem so that, so that we can move on. Okay? And that's, and I, and I know what you're saying, I know that you're shorthanded, and I know that one of the reasons that you were here was, was actually addressing maybe some help in the prosecutor's office, and I understand that. And, and I would like, you know, and I understand, um, with what we have with our, you know, regional jail bill and the amount of money that we pay out there, I think last, last month we paid off $52,000 just in a regional jail bill. And that's an unfunded mandate, which means that regardless, um, of whatever happens, the county commission has to pay for that. So, and I think one of the things that Mr. Gabe Hart and I talked about was, you know, if he can, you know, actively pursue that regional jail bill and try to hammer that, you know, try to get some of these people through the system, get them into prison, um, off our records basically, that he would be able to save our county some money. And the way it's looking, with a $52,000 regional jail bill a month, you know, if we probably had a little bit of help there, would probably help us out tremendously, um, to save some money. Okay?
Well, yeah, if, for example, and I know we're changing topic a little bit, but...
I understand, but this is all...
But as to that issue, if, um, if I had the time on a daily basis, you know, for example, instead of monthly, you know, to try and review the jail bill and see who's in there and how long he'd been there, and, you know, somebody that it may be a relatively small crime, a petty larceny even, that the person has been in jail for weeks, um, as is sometimes the case, they simply can't make a thousand dollar bond, you know, which would only require $100, a 10% payment, you know, to do that. Uh, and so they're sitting there beyond any sentence that they're likely to receive in court, you know, um, that's the case that, you know, I could contact the defense attorney and contact the magistrate and get it set on the docket and get it dealt with rather than at $50 a day, each individual is costing $1,500 a month, you know, that's sitting there. If, if I could cut the jail bill 10%, um, that would be enough to pay for an assistant to help me, that in and of itself. It would also improve the quality, you know, I'm, and I don't know if you want me to give you my full-blown pitch about this, but, uh...
Sincerely.
Well, I understand, you know, but the fact is, you know, we've doubled, uh, the, the number of felony convictions right now at, at this point in, in this year of any year and probably the past 10. Um, to me, and my assistant tells me it's part of my problem, to me, everything is important. And if everything is important, nothing's important. But truly, everything is important to me. I think part of doing the job is being consistent and being fair and treating, you know, this case, uh, certainly at least comparable cases, you know, comparably, and not saying, "Well, it's five o'clock and I've done as much as I can do today, it's time to go home." I don't do that. But, um, I know that I could do a better job, um, and that's why I want, I want to do a better job. Very quickly, I looked at the, uh, surrounding counties. Boone County has, um, roughly the same population and the same caseload we have. They have four full-time prosecutors, we have one and one part-time assistant. They also have four secretaries, we have two. Mango County, um, has about 3,000 more people than we do. They have six attorneys in their prosecuting attorney's office. Logan County has 6,000 more population than we do, um, which is about a 20% increase. They have seven attorneys. There's no other, no other county anywhere in our region, you know, that has the staffing we have. And, um, I'm, I don't accept the fact that, well, you know, and I, I have to live with, I mean, I'll accept, but I have to live with, if we don't have the money to fund help, then I don't get help. But, um, I'm not getting everything done that I want to get done, the way I want to get it done, and I think the way it should get done, and the way that I know that it could be done with a little help, and that's what I'm asking for, is a little help. But, um, regardless, and I know if, if the commission approves, um, the employment of, of another assistant to start the first of the year, that's six weeks from now, well, actually, no, that's more like 10 weeks from now. Uh, and this issue with the PSD, I'm gonna wait, uh, for that. And I will get it done, you know, and I'll get it done as fast as I can get it done, and I appreciate the front burner, you know, but, um, but that's not the only case that's not getting the attention that needs to get, some of these boundary issues and some of these other issues, and, and, um, I just want to do a better job for Lincoln County.
Jim, I, I think, you know, back a year ago, you and I talked, and, you know, I think you're, you're in the same mind I am, that timeliness is part of justice as far as, and it also is cheaper if we can, if we can operate efficiently, things like that. And, uh, and I for sure don't want you to give up on murderers and rapists and things like that, but I do, one of the things that I didn't think we mentioned to you is we did, uh, make a motion to have you, we got the problem of these people getting erroneous bills, getting bills when they shouldn't and things like that. And I think we, we wanted to ask you if you could get with Judge Hoag and ask him if there's any way that we can remedy that particular part of it to work. And one of the things, that's one of the reasons we want to ask the public service districts over, over in West Hamlin to help with it. That being said, I, we also want to make sure that it was legally, we were legal in doing that. And, and, but, uh, one of the things that we, we wanted to ask you to do is see if you could get with, uh, the judge and ask him if there's any way that we can implement something that would allow these people to get, uh, their bills on time correctly, also to be notified when they have water breaks and when they need to have boil water advisories, because they're not being, having that done, and this is, you know, a major safety problem. And, and ask the judge if he could help us in any way be able to re- remedy those problems, while we deal with the personnel problems otherwise, but as far as being able to operate that in efficient and legal safe manner, if there's anything he could do to help us.
I don't believe, um, unless and until some type of legal action is instituted, that, um, of course, the moment that's done, uh, the matter is before the court. The court can, uh, order temporary injunctions, temporary measures, um, various things pending a resolution of any action. But until that's done, I don't think the county makes anything, um, to control the PSD other than having appointed board members. And if, if the board members aren't acting, um, in accordance with the law and in the best interests of the district, you know, the remedy of filing a petition to remove, um, one or more board members is, is the remedy. But, I'm not saying that, that you couldn't, uh, file something other than a petition to remove a board member, um, to accomplish some of the issues that you would want to accomplish, but it still would require the institution of some type of action, some type of filing with the court that, um, isn't, is a part of what's...
Would that not have to be done before we could allow the PSD at West Hamlin to operate over there with that?
That's, that's what I'm saying... Well, I wasn't asking them to operate, I was asking them to be able to come over and to help provide service, actually help the people, train the people, you know, if they're, you know, if they have billing, just actually ask them if they will come over and help.
Correct.
Not say, "Hey, listen, you have to come over here." Just say, "Hey, listen, I asked the board members, you know, we have a problem over here and we need help with billing. You have new people over here and they have, you know, they have very good services."
And, and to the extent that the Lincoln PSD is willing to, to cooperate with, with West Hamlin PSD...
Who's going to make that decision?
Well, that, that was my concern, is there's, it's a dysfunctional board, possibly not even an intact board, and they can't, you know, we could say, "Please let us do this with West Hamlin," but, you know, you have one guy sitting over there, two guys sitting over, whatever it is, and, and I guess that was my concern and why I thought, you know, maybe, uh, you know, and, and this would be, this would be what I would like to see happening. If it requires us to file and to go into certain court and ask for an injunction to do this, then let us know and let us do it. You know, and doing this other stuff, because I'm really concerned about these people having water breaks and they're possibly getting, you know, a whole, a whole community gets sick. And, and not to say that would happen, but it's just something we, we have no way of preventing or have no way of knowing now. These people are sitting over there using the water and they don't know what quality water they have. And, and to me, that's scary. That's like, I mean, I would rather they, if they had an old well at home that they knew was safe, you know, I would say, "Well, you know that's safe, but do we know that this PSD is providing safe water to these people?" And I don't, I can't say that right now from what I heard a while ago. I mean, and that's, that's scary, and I think that, that has to be, and I think it's all our concern is that, number one, you know, they need to, they need to have someone there that can look at breaks and issue boil water advisories to keep people updated once we're on here. And, and if, if that means that, you know, we have to call a special session tomorrow or whenever we can do it, to get that before the circuit court, to have that looked at, I think we need to do that. I mean, if that's, if that's where we're going anyway, then, then we need to do it as soon as possible.
I agree, if we could tie, if, if there's going to be some way in an emergency situation to help and money, that the court would take it over themselves and appoint a fiduciary commissioner or something to run this thing, so we can get on our feet. I mean, it gets in a mess.
The public service commission, I've speak, I mean, I spoke with them for the past month, and they, they were actually talking about, you know, I think Wayne County right now, they're in that situation where their, where their county commission is actually acting on behalf of the public, of their, there's a public service district down there. Speaking with the people from the public service commission, um, they felt like that it would be a lot quicker and more efficient if there was a petition, um, to the circuit court to have removal of the, of the, you know, the factors that are troubling us. Do, have we gave you, and this is my question to you, and I know that we have asked you to look into it and take all necessary, you know, steps. Do we need to issue or ask you, make a formal motion to say, "We petition to remove certain individuals," or do you feel like that we have given you that authority?
No, ultimately, um, when it comes time to make a decision, as to the course of action, and a decision has to be made, it'll have to be voted upon and, and directed.
So, we, I mean, the, the thing that we did a month ago, you know, that is not, I mean, that is not enough for you to act?
Well, it's...
It was enough to, to investigate, but not to petition for removal?
Right, takes steps, uh, you know, toward a resolution. But if the, if the resolution is ultimately to file a civil action, that's something that should be voted upon and approved by the commission.
When will you know? When, I mean, are you going to call us and say, "Hey, listen, I feel..."
I've completed, you know, assembling and assembling, you know, all the necessary information. I've, I've, I'm proposing that, that we take this action and, uh, and ask for your approval. Yeah, that, that would require a meeting and an approval of...
But do you feel, I mean, uh, and I, and I know as far as removal, I, I know the process as far as removal of board members, we went through all that before, but do you think that it would be best if, which is from the end I was talking about, as far as getting this service going again? I mean, is, you know, is, is there something that, that I, and this, and to me, it allows you to continue your investigation and things like that, but, you know, is there some way that we can meet and, and draft, uh, you know, some kind of request to, or an injunction, ask for an injunction in circuit court so that we could get this going again and then deal with the personnel issues? I mean, to me, it seems important to make sure, you know, because of the safety, because of them getting the correct bills, is there, what is the procedure that we would have to do to get it before the circuit court? As far as just this issue, not dealing with the personnel?
You talking about like a suspension of power from that board?
Well, if, if, it's my, I, I was thinking if the court could issue an injunction that would allow us to participate in, in getting someone in there that can run the business and make sure everybody's safe in the meantime. And I think that we asked Commissioner President Matthews to talk with PSC about doing these same type of things. But to me, I, I would, to me, it seems like we ought to focus on getting someone in there, operating it correctly and safely. And then all these other things about who needs to be in, who appoints interim, who does this and that.
Could we do that right now?
Of course, all the grounds that go into saying, "Here's why we need this immediate action," are the grounds that you would use to ask that those that have created the situation be removed. And my thought, my envision would be a single filing that would include, as one of several counts, a request for injunction relief, which immediately upon filing could be scheduled for a, a hearing, which could be scheduled, uh, at the court's convenience. It, it circumvents the normal, uh, 30-day response period with normal civil suits, things of that nature, because the law recognizes where there's a danger of irreparable harm that a court can act, you know, um, in, on interim basis, a temporary restraining order, um, you know, in a way that ultimately may not be the way it ends up, but at the time does what can be done to prevent irreparable harm.
So, this would all come at one time? So, what you're, I mean, we, are you saying, are you saying that right now that we really, uh, do we have the authority to act?
I don't believe we do.
That's, I mean, that's, that's the thing that we need to, I mean, that everyone needs to know, and that's what we need to know, what we have the authority to do and what we don't. And you, but we do have the authority to petition for removal, but that has to come, you know, with evidence, and you are collecting that evidence.
Uh, it's best, you know, before you, you try and, and, I mean, you're talking about filing a lawsuit, before filing the lawsuit, to make sure that you have your points and your facts and your evidence in a fashion that, when you lay it out, you don't end up coming back later and saying, "Well, okay, we, we assumed this and we took third-hand hearsay about that and so forth, but, but we still got some good points in it." You know, it really should be solid, it should be organized, it should be persuasive and stand up to the litigation process.
Well, I, I think, you know, what we need is, as soon as you come up with that and as soon as we can legally meet after that, we need to be there, you know, and so, uh, and I think that's what we're at, I don't think we're going anywhere else.
And I, and I think that that's what people, and that's what, really, that's what needed to, you know, people need to hear that. People need to understand that, that this is, that you, you know, that you're looking into this and that, you know, things are, things could be happening rather quick.
And I appreciate the fact that the commission, you know, is seen as all-powerful when it comes to matters in the county, but, you know, the ultimate authority is, is the legislature and our Supreme Court, and they've established, you know, a framework for the operation of a PSD which allows the commission to carefully consider and appoint, you know, people to operate that. Uh, but then shield those people from being ordered what to do by those that have appointed them. And if they don't do a good job, just as voters can remove people from office by not voting for them, there is a mechanism, in addition to the expiration of their terms, and they do have limited terms, but in addition to the expiration of their terms, they can be removed, um, upon proper grounds, as stated under the statute. But beyond that, they don't work for the county commission, they don't answer directly to the county commission as their boss, and that's what contributes to, you know, some person's feeling that they're, you know, beyond reach of, um, law or, or answering to anyone.
My que, another question. Um, in the code, it talks about 5%, 5% of, you know, signatures, you know, people, um...
Citizens could do that.
Citizens could do that, okay. My question is, how long will that take? Let's say that we, we would get, let's say that there would be 5% of all the people in District One or that's, that's serving the Lincoln Public Service District. We had 5% for, for removal of the board member, how long would that take? And where, wouldn't we, would that have to go through the proper, would that have to go before the circuit court?
Yeah, I mean...
You'll have a 5% on the... Wait a minute, he has the four.
But the citizens, of course, have the ability, just as the county commission does. Now, they don't want to give any individual citizen that much, uh, power and authority, but, you know, they recognize if a substantial number, in this case, if it's 5%, and it's been a while since I've looked at the statute from the perspective of any removal other than by the county commission. But my best recollection is that those citizens, even if a petition is filed, still have to establish grounds, the same as the commission would if they filed a petition. So, you know, if the commission were not inclined to pursue that action, the individual citizens could.
Well, listen, I appreciate you coming there. I appreciate you, uh, coming, and, and I know this is impromptu, and, and there's a lot of people here, and there's a lot of people that really want, you know, really wants some action, and I know that, and we're really going to look to get this paid.
Yes.
I think it's necessary.
On the practical side of the nonsense and everything, are we being able to make sure that, uh, not only talking about sending out bills and getting money collected and getting it deposited in the bank, but have been able to get, who's going to make sure that people get to paid and do their job and think, making payroll and things like that? Have we got that under control over there?
Yeah, we do. Uh, the only problem is, uh, he still has the ability to go into the bank.
They have a...
Let's, um, I think that, I think that that might be something that you might need to talk to, um, you know, the prosecutor about, you know?
Yeah, I probably could.
Yeah. But I mean, you know, that's, that's really where we're at. And I mean, you know, um, we've heard what, what can happen. If you have any information, um, regarding the public service district, if you have any, anything, please give it to Mr. Gabe Hart, okay?
I will.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on to unfinished business, possible action. I'm going to contact them to DOH to get a county line sign put up in the correct place on Route Three.
I don't think that would be...
And it would be, yeah, it's on, it's on the end coming in from, you know, you're coming from Boone County, boy.
And our assessor has determined that's the correct place.
The assessor has determined that it's the correct place to put the sign. Can we, if you feel like, um, sending a letter to the Department of Highways and asking them to please put a "Welcome to Lincoln County" sign?
I'll move it.
All right.
I'll second that.
And any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, with that being your name, this motion carries. Gentlemen, we are now in new business. You have, you've been able to look at new business. Um, do you have any questions regarding new business? If not, I'll make a motion that we approve the new business. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, with that being your name, this motion carries. Now, we're Commission, Commission Concerns and Communications, Commissioner Cannon.
I've spoken to John.
He's, he's good, you've already spoken, all right. Doc Vance?
Sorry.
Um, I, you know, I don't have any, anything to, I don't have a problem. I, I want to mention that, I don't know if any of you all saw, Mercy can speak?
Hey, Mercy, can you speak during my, whenever I go? Okay?
And I don't care if he's speaking now, he's suppressing me. But I, I don't know if you all saw or not, but we, the Ivy Branch Trail was on... Uh, the only other thing I want to say is, I, I, I'm really sorry that this problem has developed like it has over there. I mean, I don't, you know, if you, if you could look ahead and see these things coming a little bit better, but when you deal with individuals and things like that, it's really hard to tell what kind of job somebody's gonna do, do they start doing the job? And, uh, some of those little jobs and, and, and it's just like anything else, you get in situations where you have some people that do all the work and some people do none. You, you could have situations where we all put it, push, put the work together and get things done, but, um, I, I, I just wanted the people in attendance to know that, uh, if, if this commission could have done anything different than what we've done, we would have done it. Uh, we have, we have followed the rule of the law as best we can. We, uh, we allow our prosecutor to tell us what legal actions to take and when to take those actions, and I think all of you can tell, that have been sitting here can tell that this is, this has been something we've discussed for quite a while. And, uh, it's, it's, I, I'll, I'll second whoever said that, uh, you know, the commission sometimes thought of us could do everything in the county and things like that, but we, we a lot, a lot of times we can't. I think the, the only other position I ever had there was, where I did less and got complained at more, was when I sat on the Board of Education. So, but, uh, but, uh, and I'm glad not to be there now. But, uh, I do appreciate Charles' patience, and I, and I appreciate what Jim's tried to do, and, uh, and I, and he, he is right. This, our, our sheriff's department, things like that, has done a lot better job in the last, last couple of years in getting criminals off the street and addressing drug problems we've had in the county, and, and these are things that are priority. I mean, I'm sure none of us wants him to give up on someone that may have committed murder and get back out on the street and hurt somebody else, or may have abused a child and get back on the street and hurt somebody, hurt somebody. Uh, so just try, try your best as you can to be patient with us, and we'll, and I, and I can assure you that all three of us up here will do everything we can to get this situation resolved as best we can. That's all right.
I would, um, I've received some information from Mercy Sims, and I would like for Mercy Sims, for you, you want to speak on behalf of...
Okay, I did, I know what you're talking about. I did, Anita and I have, I want to put you back to water. Anita and I have been put in charge of the groundbreaking ceremony, but they said there is no money. And we're, we're turning to you to see if we could get some money for the, for the coffee cake and the luncheon for the groundbreaking thing. I mean, we've got a little over a week to put this together and...
How much you need?
I don't know. Well, if we could, I, I think, hopefully, you have lots of credit card, maybe we could do it.
That might be maxed out, though.
How I feel about this, it's been so long, ten years I've worked on, that I know, trying to get water, and it's been so long, I'll give you two hundred and fifty dollars, I want to talk to you.
Well, you know, I, and we're, we're willing to put some in too, but I think four, five hundred dollars...
Fifty should be done?
Four, five hundred dollars, we're very conservative, and I think we could do it.
I don't have much time left, I'd like to see if water flowed before I die.
I think there'll be some other people that will contribute, so think of the other people.
But there was, there've been two issues lately. There was, uh, I was involved in a conference call about probably when the bulk water issue was. I was in my office and I get this call, they asked me if I would participate in it, and I said, well, I'm not sure what I could provide, but certainly I'll be glad to. Well, apparently, I did not speak favorably to Mr. Gregory's position, and I did not know until I was in a meeting a, a few days ago, but, you know, in a conference call, everybody talks and every, and you listen. So I, I stated my position and, and I waited, and then I think the attorney asked me a question, I responded, then everything was quiet. So then all of a sudden, I hear, uh, I would not like it to jeopardize the alcohol project, and that just kind of made my hair stand up on the back of my neck, and I said, I'm sure, Ron, that, Mr. Gregory, you didn't say that you would jeopardize the alcohol project. Well, what he thought, he had hung up the phone probably three or four minutes before, and I'm listening, and I guess when my voice came through that phone, he looked at the attorney, and that was a whoops, but that was not, and I got an email, which I will give to the, a text I'll give to the prosecutor. I got this three days ago, it says, "I assume you're aware that if the Lincoln County Commission, its present position, we cannot award the alcohol Woodville project due to lack of a quorum. My attorney is working to correct this, but I wanted to let you know." Well, a quorum, so apparently he is, there's collusion with somebody else that's gonna... So he's, twice he's told me that he's gonna jeopardize the alcohol project within a month. So with, I don't know his thought process, but we don't need a, a chairman of the board with this attitude.
I agree. All right, anyway, uh, groundbreaking ceremony, Saturday, October the twenty-fifth, um, at eleven o'clock at the Mud River Fire Department.
If we have money for, if we have money for.
And I think we'll be getting you some money for that, all right? Uh, I'd like to, something else, um, was in new business, and I'd like to mention this, our county clerk, Derek Baker, has applied for a records management preservation grant. It's gonna help him maintain and preserve century-old irreplaceable land books that are currently in bad shape. This grant will allow the clerk's office to send off the books and get them recovered. The company also puts a solution on each paper to remove the acid from the paper. Um, I'd like to commend the, the county clerk. He went after a grant to, uh, to help out with, um, preservation of some of the books that we have, and I think he needs commended for that. Ladies and gentlemen, um, I also want to say, let's not end on a bad note. We do have some things that are, that are, is great, one on in the county, appreciate the article about the cell phone service in the Lincoln Journal. I think everybody is, is happy about that, and I feel like we have a good direction in this county. There's a lot of things that are at, and I know there's some setbacks, and there's gonna be setbacks over and out and then, but, um, I'm very comfortable with, um, with our prosecutor, and I feel like that he's gonna, you know, he's working as hard as he can, he's gonna get this thing correct. I also appreciate the, the work that Doc Vance and, uh, Mr. McCann have put into helping with, you know, being people that you can talk to with, uh, you know, whenever you have situations. I'm relatively new to this commission, and, uh, they've been here for a while, and, um, you know, you have issues like this come up, and, uh, you got, you start reading a lot of law and, uh, and code, and, and, you know, you call them and you say, listen, I, you know, what, have you ever, have you ever experienced this, or have you ever done this? And, uh, it was just, it's, it's been good, they've been good to, to help with that. And I also like to appreciate everybody who came tonight, you know? Sending inboxes on social media and talking to you, um, and I appreciate you coming and, and showing the, the need and, and how, how fast that we need this thing to happen. Thank you for coming. Ladies and gentlemen, that's all I have. I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll say that.
All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.